Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the commission. I'm Chuck Sheen. This is the regular, I'm sorry, the special meeting of the Town of Stonington Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll let the record reflect that the meeting was convened at 7:00 PM. I see we have all regular members present tonight. So first item on the agenda is minutes. What's the commission's pleasure on number 1746?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for number 1746 on January 2nd, 2024, as written and submitted.
Motion's been made to approve. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
One abstention. I was not present.
Abstention. Chair votes aye, the motion passes. Minutes, number 1747, what's the commission's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, as written and submitted, the meeting minutes for meeting number 1747 from January 24th, 2024.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Gary Belky. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, yes, there's an edit that needs to be performed. The last entry item, the next virtual meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January 24th. That's incorrect. It should be February 28th.
Thank you, Ben. Can we get that corrected? Should we?
amend the motion to make that change.
Make that one correction. Motion's been amended. Are you okay with that on the second?
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention. Chair votes aye, the motion passes. Opportunity for the public to make any comments? Can come up to the mic and speak? Before we go any further and before I close this item, I should probably note that I was given a note that there was some confusion perhaps amongst some people who came to the meeting tonight, thinking that the Enders Island application was regarding a septic system. And that application is not regarding a septic system. That application is regarding a seawall modification and improvement. So if you're here to speak about the septic system, the comments will only be received on the seawall application this evening. So hearing that, has anybody changed their mind and wished to speak to item four? Seeing none. Item five, correspondence. I don't have anything. Clifton?
Nothing.
Staff reports?
No staff reports, just the one administrative review item.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't print it out. So, yeah, I spoke to, I spoke to alternate Philbrick earlier today, and he requested that I plug the survey for the zoning rewrite. That Phase Two survey is going to be posted back onto the town website, and there are also going to be flyers that will be in the planning and zoning office if people are interested in filling out that survey. There'll be a bigger social media style blast alongside that as well, but I just wanted to remind everyone that we do have a open survey for the zoning regulations rewrite Phase Two.
Thanks, sir. Commission have any reports for the board? No? Zoning enforcement violations? Nothing? Okay, that brings us to the item of administrative review, CGS 8-24, review of the circus lot. They've sent a request for review and report for the potential purchase of 29 Neuss Avenue. I hope I'm not mispronouncing that. Map block lot number 1-3-1 by the Town of Stonington pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 8-24. Item is in your packet. Any discussion on this matter? Clifton?
No, I'll just give a brief background. This parcel at 29 Neuss Ave is, you know, we commonly call it the circus lot. It's a piece of property currently owned by the Town of Westerly, but in the deed arrangement from when Westerly purchased that property from the Town of Stonington for its wellhead area, there was a clause in it that allowed the Town of Stonington to purchase it back once it was, once that use was exhausted for $35,000. The Board of Selectmen at its January 10th, 2024 meeting voted, or voted to refer the acquisition of that land to the commission, and the first selectman's letter was attached to this packet. And basically per section 824, any proposal by a municipal agency to acquire land for the use of a park or other public means is subject to review from the commission in terms of its alignment with the POCD. And so the only thing that the commission has to do tonight is look at the potential acquisition and see if that use, use of that land for park or public-related services would be consistent with what was outlined in the POCD. So it's just a consistency finding, no real vote beyond that. And there's no project or plan that's going to be under discussion at this time.
Thank you, Clifton. Does anybody have any questions, or Clifton, on this matter?
My only question was, and maybe it's not relevant, but do we know the fair market value of that land?
I do not.
It's $35,000, I think.
Is that, is that something that you know?
Yeah, I figured, I just.
The fair, sorry.
Can you answer the question, Lee?
Maybe.
Deborah Downey, Selectmen.
So the question was, do we know the fair market value of that property?
No, the $35,000 came from the contract.
Right.
When Westerly purchased it from Stonington, so it's written in there, we do not know the fair market value. I expect it's more than $35,000.
I would assume so. Okay, thank you.
I can't imagine that anybody would ever question $35,000 for a parcel anywhere near this location at this time. Any other questions? What's the commission's pleasure on the circus lot review?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this submission and confirm that it does, does in fact conform to our plan of conservation and development as requested.
Thank you, Ryan. Motion's been made to approve. Submit a favorable report on the Connecticut General Statute 8-24, review circus lot. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Thank you, Gary.
I'm totally in favor of this project moving forward.
As is the chair.
Yep.
The ideal use for something in a floodplain zone, and it certainly is a very wise use of this lot and a reasonable purchase. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any abstentions? Matter passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is St. Edmund's Retreat Coastal Area Management Application for the repair and restoration of existing shoreline structures and landward seawall at St. Edmund's Retreat on Enders Island, property located in Enders Island Mystic. I should note that I received a letter this evening, comments of Frank Marco, and essentially he raises a variety of issues which I'll, I have not had an opportunity to read this, but I'll, I'll give this to Clinton for the record. Is there anyone here from Enders Island? You want to, you want to come forward at all and say anything about your application? Just please state your name, please, sir, and if you're with a firm, name of the firm and the address.
My name is Keith Nielsen. I'm with Daco Incorporated over in Mystic, and we've prepared the coastal site plan application that you have before you tonight. This project is a much-needed restoration of the seawall that lines the perimeter of the island from the east edge to the southwest corner. We noted first the deterioration in this wall about 15 years ago, and undertook initial permitting to have the wall rebuilt in place. The project was very expensive and beyond the means for the novice yet to undertake at the time, so it was put on hold. Then a long time Hurricane Sandy came in and destroyed a, about 100-foot section of the wall, 50 to 100 feet, at the southwest corner, southeast corner. And so it was decided recently to undertake a modification to the wall, which would allow us to build a cast-in-place concrete wall on the inside of the existing seawall. That was partially in deference to the budget, also to permit eligibility issues that we had discussed with the DEP. And so the project plans that you see before you tonight are for that purpose. It is intended that this project is going to make use of materials that are entirely on the site at this time, except for the concrete for the new seawall. New seawall will be located about five feet behind the existing seawall and will consist of a large spread footing. It's a cantilever concrete seawall. It'll raise to, rise to the same height as the existing seawall, and the top of the existing seawall for about four to five feet will be chipped off, and the rocks salvaged from that operation will be placed between the two seawalls as stabilizing material for what is remaining of the existing seawall and the new concrete wall. Rocks that are salvaged from the site and from the wall demolition project will be utilized as the new foundation material, which is free draining and will incorporate the ability to absorb waves overtopping the existing remaining seawall and make sure that that water does not get onto the site. Water that does get onto the site in, in high wind, high wave conditions will be handled through surface drainage, surface drainage on the inside of the wall, and the plans have details to show that. This project is undergone simultaneous review with the DEP and the Corps of Engineers. We comply with all of the self-verification requirements for the Corps of Engineers project, and the DEP has reviewed the certificate of permission application, made initial comments, which we have responded to. They're considering those responses at this time. So I'll turn our attention to the drawings for this project so that you can see the extent of the work. We have two columns of notes on the right-hand side of page one, which address zoning issues and erosion and sediment control and water, I should say, work sequence notes on the right-hand, I'm sorry, the left-hand edge of the page. On sheet one, the perimeter of the island is shown, and this survey, or I should say, our site plan is based on a survey by Resource Management and Mapping Licensed Professional Surveyor Corporation and State. And what we have done here is shown in gray shading areas along the south tip of the island and the northeast edge of the island, where rock crushing and reclamation will take place to serve as a source for the materials for this project. Based on my meeting with the planning and zoning officials, it was suggested that I include some sketches that would show the sequence of work and where certain work items were going to take place on the site. So this exhibit that I've prepared shows in yellow the area where vehicles, where the construction vehicles will come into the site along west edge of the property, and it also shows areas where rock reclamation work is going to take place at the south end of the site and the northeast corner. The next exhibit shows how the wall will begin its construction phasing. In order to make the project flow as, as efficiently as possible, the work will start adjacent to the small chapel at the, at the middle of the east edge of the island and proceed in roughly 40 to 50-foot increments, including first excavation and removal of material right down to the ledge, and then placing crushed stone, which we will make on site, both at the south and the northeast corners. And that crushed stone will serve as the basis for the foundation for the seawall. When that, the first 80 feet or so will be excavated, the foundation footing will be established, and then starting at the north 40 or 50-foot section, there will be construction of a low, the low first phase of the wall, be four feet high and two feet wide, and it will be the foundation for the upper wall, which will be built later. As the work will progress to the south, one wall will be cast at the far north end, the lower wall will be cast at the middle end or the middle section, just south of that, the footing, the foundation will be cast, and south of that, the next phase will be excavated down to ledge. The reason for this sequencing is because we're in such confined spaces along the east edge of the property. In order to make use of our material and make efficient use of the concrete trucks coming to the site, we will have, we have to work in these segments. And stockpiled material for crushed stone and rock fill will be down in this area. The haul route to the site will be around the south tip of the island. And the work will progress segmentally, moving down in 40-foot increments. That process will take three months or so. Sheet two of your coastal site plan drawings show the north end of the island where some of the work, which is already covered in the DEP application, including the dock facility at the basin, the stone wall repairs along the northwesterly edge, and this area in green is the area where most of the focus on rock salvage will take place, first split then crushed. And the material will be stockpiled in this area so that trucks can, again, make use of the west perimeter road to get down to the construction area. There's no work that's taking place, waterward of the, of the existing bermed rock on the east, northeast face of the island. Looking at the south half of the island, we, this is on sheet three of your site plan set, we have a fairly detailed drawing, a detail in the lower right-hand corner that shows the ultimate configuration of the new seawall, the inset from the existing seawall, the reuse of the salvaged seawall stone as infill between the two walls, the use of the crushed rock as the base of the foundation for this cantilever seawall, and then the reuse of salvaged gravel and topsoil from the excavation as forming the embankment behind the walkway. The top surface of the 10-foot-wide walkway will be concrete. It'll have stone posts at roughly 10-foot intervals, and they will be interconnected with chains with rosary beads. It's called the rosary walk, and so that will be the, the manner of containment for activities on the top. The three-to-one sloping soils on the backside of the walk on the inside of the island will be grassed, and at the base of the, of that embankment, where we meet existing grade, there will be a drainage swell focusing water into six drainage inlets along that depression, along the swell. And those drainage inlets will be piped through the seawall and discharged into the stone fill behind the existing seawall. The existing drainage on the site is all surface flow, ground absorption, and the ground, the water gets through the ground down to the ledge surface, percolates out through the lower soils and into Fisher's Island Sound and Mystic Harbor. And that system will, will stay in effect. At the southwesterly edge of the project, the, the wall is in varying stages of disrepair, and it will be mortared, and new stone will be incorporated into a cap so that it remains consistent with what the wall used to be. The wall in this area is, is three to four feet lower than the wall around the point, and so at the completion of the project, the exterior stone wall remaining will all be roughly at the same elevation of about 11. The fourth sheet of your site plan set shows the finished walkway along the south edge of the island, and it's a graded walkway, a uniform elevation of 11.5 for most of its length, with handicap access, sloping ramps in accordance with ADA standards at the southwesterly edge where the walkway comes back down to existing grade. The grade at the north end, the ground is already at about elevation 11 on the backside of the small chapel, and, and so there will be a very limited dip in the walkway down to about 10.5 and then back up to 11.5 within 100 feet or so. And so that will meet ADA standards the way it is. We do have some additional work on the viaduct, the causeway, bridge deck will be spanned with portable bridge, pre-manufactured portable bridge spanning plates for the concrete trucks and the crusher that will come to the site, and at the end of the project, they will be removed. It is anticipated that the bridge deck will be replaced and probably as the last item of, of work on the site, and that will incorporate removal by barge-mounted crane and placing a new pre-cast bridge deck on the existing stone abutments. Landscaping in the northeast corner at the end of the project will be grass, and we've got a detail in that, in the application set, and it will be interspersed with clumps of beach grass to simulate, you know, a beach type of environment. And that's it for my technical presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I always have questions if no one else does.
I have some questions, but allow you to go first.
Thank you. What is the approximate length of the walkway?
About 850 feet.
Well, that's all. And, thank you. And then the crushed stone, is there going to be dust mitigation?
The stone will be thoroughly wetted before it's, before it's split and as it goes into the crusher to minimize dust.
So be split with like a backhoe on a hydraulic hammer?
Right.
And what are the hours of the operation of that machine?
Between eight and five each day.
Eight to five.
Eight to five.
Five days a week or seven?
Five days a week.
Thank you.
Sure. For what duration?
The rock splitting will, we believe will be completed within a month, and the crushing will be completed within a month as well.
Question for you, is, is that constituted use, the operation of a quarry machine like that?
Not if it's part of a construction-related activity, so no. If it was prolonged as a separate operation, then yes.
I did check with the ZEO, and she said if it's onsite and they're not selling it offsite, then it's perfectly legitimate to process anything onsite.
Is, how much noise does a machine like that make?
I'm, I don't know.
I have a question, if I may. I'm just curious, with the cement trucks that you're going to have coming in, I mean, what's the frequency per day? I'm just trying to think of the traffic impact and coming down that causeway.
For each one of those 40 to 50-foot sections, their anticipated length is going to be based on using a certain number of trucks, probably three or four.
Three or four for each segment?
For each segment, right. So as they finish, as they construct each segment, each footing, then each section of lower wall and finally the upper wall, there will be, it will be based on a certain number of, of trucks arriving, you know, within a couple of hours of each other.
Those are three separate pours, correct?
I'm sorry?
There are three separate pours for each section?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So just maybe to kind of close the loop on, how long would you expect those kind of concrete trucks to be coming and going throughout, throughout the life of the project? Three months or?
I believe it'll be three to four months.
Okay, and that would be pretty much every day, the five days a week that you're thinking, you know, once?
Probably not every day, but as the contractor wants to place his forming, place the reinforcement so that the foundation slab basically is ready to pour, and he'll do, like I said, the first two segments that way. Then he'll place the reinforcement for the first wall and cast that at the same time, hopefully that he's ready to cast maybe the third footing, all right? Then he'll come back and cast the second wall and maybe cast the first top wall. Right. And, and that's the way he'll stage the, the truck trips. So, like I said, it'll be three or four a day.
Could you talk to us about the temporary span that's going to go into the causeway, give us a little bit more information on that?
It's, it would be a prefabricated, heavy-duty steel or, or metal framed and bulk-headed rectangular tube or like an I-beam laying on its side. And it will span about, as near as we understand at this point, about five to 10 feet, let's say 10 feet, either side of the existing bridge slab, and have ramps up onto it so that the initial trucks, the trucks can get over it, so.
Who certifies the load rating capacity of that?
We have a structural engineer. It'll be Charles Brown from Gibble-Norden, Champion.
Is there a shop drawing on that that gives us some detail on that? I don't see anything on the drawings.
I'm sorry?
Is there a shop drawing on that or something?
There's no, no shop drawing.
Well, there should be.
Okay.
If it's going to be carrying concrete trucks over a causeway, there should be shop With regard, you sort of lost me on the, the individual phases. I heard 40 feet in each phase. How many phases will there be that are 40 feet long?
There would be 20 of them.
20 of them, and each one takes about a week, you said?
The, the first two will take The, the first two will take about a week to, to form and pour the first two slabs. After that, the contractor will be forming and casting a wall section and the next slab. And then as he moves down, he'll be casting a lower wall section and the next slab and casting the upper wall on the first set. And so it will be, the sequence of work will be just taking the high wall, the completed wall section, the lower wall section and a bare slab. And it will be moving down 40 feet at a time.
Okay, so in all, all of those 40 sections, how long is that going to take? Considering weather works?
Three, three to four months.
Three to four months. Okay, and on the other end of the island where you're principally using crushed rock, how long is that going to take?
The crushing and, and the splitting and crushing is supposed to be finished within a month.
Is that going to take place concurrently or is it sequential?
That will be sequential. We'll do the rock splitting first so we have the full supply of rock for the project.
Okay, so when do, when do you think, assuming you get all the approvals you need? Do you have Corps of Engineers approval?
The Corps of Engineers, this project complies with the self verification general permit. And so we, yes, we have it.
Do you have a general permit?
We have a general permit. It complies with the self verification. The Corps of Engineers has, understands that the D E P permit is about to be issued. As soon as that is issued, we will file the self verification form with Corps of Engineers and they will acknowledge it and agree that it conforms to their verification standards.
I just got this package tonight on, you know, with the latest update on, on the application. So forgive me if this next question is answered in the package. I haven't had a chance to go through it yet. The deep permit.
Yes.
Have you received everything you need from deep?
Well, we received their initial comment letter and have addressed-
I know they asked some additional questions.
Right, and we've answered all the additional questions. We're waiting for their final review.
So in all, if you were to start the project and weather cooperates with you, how long do you think if, if, you know, you get good weather, would it take you to get from A to B, finish the entire project?
It'll take about eight months.
Eight months. I see that the town engineer has not yet commented on this. I think, has the town engineer sent this out to C L A engineers?
The town engineer, the town engineer did not provide standard comments at the time of the application and rather deferred to the comments that were made by both S L R as well as deep. As of today, I just received, I've received verification via email that there were no significant concerns with the project, but that wasn't included in your packet or the report.
So it wasn't sent out to C L A engineers?
It was not, no.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions to the applicant?
On average, how many people are expected to be working there a day?
The crews will probably be five to six.
So I'm, I'm sure you considered this based on the length of the project. But are there any concerns if there was another major storm coming in during the time of the construction? And what would you do? I mean, I know you're going to shut down the island because you can't get across. But in general, is there anything that needs to be considered there?
The contractor will clearly have to move his equipment back away from the walls. There's not much we can do with the sections that we have not yet altered. So we're dependent on them as we have been for the last, I guess they've been there 80 years. The, and, and that's really all we can do at this point. Make the project move forward as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Hey, may I just inquire a bit about what the, what the impact to the island would be over the next 10, 20 years without this repair happening?
Well, the, that's, it's hard to say. If we anticipate that there are no storms, then I would say that the concrete rate of deterioration right now would continue to shed some of the armor stone on the outside of the wall. As you may have seen, has already happened, especially up near the small chapel. We're not exactly sure about all of the impact damage that was caused by Hurricane Sandy, which knocked down that southeast corner. But in a site inspection and previous condition report that we had done maybe five years before, when we first started the original project, we had noted that there were some settlement cracks and indications of severe deterioration in that area. And so the storm basically knocked down the weak link in the wall. And it, we don't know, the, the wall structure was innovative for a 1939 project and involved combined use of concrete and rock fill between two vertical rock walls and has, has pretty amazing resilience and, and so on. But it is nearing the end of the concrete effectiveness because saltwater deteriorates the concrete.
And would there be structures on the property that would become vulnerable should more of the wall fail?
Well, the, not, not habitable structures right now. And, and that is prefaced with the presumption that we will not have another Hurricane of 38 or a Hurricane of 54. Because those were exceptional storms. And I think there would be major damage on the site if those were to come again.
And, and how, so the Hurricane of 54 was post-construction of the existing wall. What were the impacts to the island from that storm?
It's my understanding the wall held.
All right, that, that does it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Will there be any crane work or barge work, waterborne activity? Is this all landwork except for the bridge?
It's all anticipated to be landwork except for the bridge and the placement of armor stone on the outside of the wall, the existing wall. That's part of the D E P permit.
Right, that's what I thought I saw.
Yeah, we've, we've anticipated that it could be done by a long reach excavator, but a good part of the existing wall has to be done in order for the ground to be stable enough for that equipment to get there. So I think it probably would be barge work.
And is there, if you had all your permits and everything was a go, when would you start work?
Next week.
Would you consider not working during the high peak of summer with all the traffic on Mason's Island as it is now? During the summer?
The, if that becomes a necessity, the, that would have to be worked out with the management of the novice yet.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ben, did you have another question? I'm sorry, Brian.
The other Ben?
The other Ben, yeah. I have a couple more questions. Since this will be done really in the heart of the hurricane season, is there any contingency plan necessary if we did get a tragic event like that in the middle of this project?
Well, the existing wall still provides some protection. It's our anticipated scope of work will be to finish the new wall and to immediately take down the top section of the existing wall so that the loads imposed by hurricane driven waves would not have such a big target. And so we would diminish the potential damage to the existing wall and add to the bracing of the new wall. And, and that's, that's all we can do. Until it's finished, there will be weak spots in the protection of the site.
How about the stockpiles of material that you're going to have? Are they, could they conceptually be compromised by wave action and cause massive sedimentation problems in the sound?
Well, remember, the, the existing wall is going to remain in place. So everything, all the soils on the site are currently contained within the existing wall. But we're not taking that wall down, we're just lowering the top of it. And we would be lowering the top as the new wall is completed so that the, the new wall would be taking its place. And so I think that the soil erosion that was experienced in the Hurricane of 38 will not be duplicated in this project. And, and obviously the, the speed with which this project can be undertaken and completed, we're, we're, we've got our eye on the hurricane season and we know that there's emphasis to get this done as soon as possible.
How many additional trucks do you anticipate will be coming to this site through Mason's Island on a daily basis for deliveries and, and other types of reasons to support the project?
Most of the, most of the, the new traffic will be, and I presume you're not so concerned with the contractors, small pickups and dump trucks and, and things like that. You're concerned about the concrete trucks?
No, well, I'm concerned about the concrete trucks, very concerned. But, but there's going to be other materials used, you know, on this project.
Well, the forming and the reinforcement, of course, will, will come by truck. But our, our real design basis is to use everything on the site to make the foundation, the footing, the embankment and the new landscaped areas all out of material on the site. So the real trucking outside of the day to day access is going to be the concrete trucks.
Okay, so let's deal with the day to day access. How many workers, how many vehicles?
Two to three vehicles, six workers.
For this, for this size project, six workers?
Yeah.
That, that covers equipment operators, laborers, masons, people to do form work, six people?
Six people.
I want to hire those guys. Okay, any other questions from the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do actually to follow up on one of your questions. So with the crushed rock that you're going to, you know, with the gravel you're going to make on site, correct?
Yes.
Part of this process, how's that going to be stored? I mean, I'm assuming that you're going to crush it and then it's not going to be immediately put in. So you would need to have a place to store it and I might have missed it on some of that.
Back to the north half of the island drawing. The rock splitting and crushing will start up here at the northerly end of the rock that is on the site and will be stockpiled right in this area.
Okay.
All right, and as they move down, more of the rock will be crushed. It will be placed in that stockpile. Trucks will run the stockpiled crushed stone down to the south end by this west travelway.
Okay, I guess my question maybe to be a little more specific is it's being stockpiled. Is it going to be enclosed or is this going to be a pile?
It's just going to be a pile at this time.
So if there was a hurricane that were to come up in the course of this, would you, how would you take care of that? I wouldn't want that stock, big pile of crushed rock getting washed off into the sound.
The, this broad gray strip down the east side of the island in the northeast quadrant is material that is going to be relocated from this existing stone over making up a berm, which we have a detail for in the upper right hand corner of sheet two. So we're anticipating that the, the protective nature of that stockpiled material will stay during the course of the project. And the elevation of that pile will be up to about elevation 10. It'll be roughly five feet above existing grade. So it'll be up to elevation 10. And the layout of the island is such that the worst case storm waves come from the southeast.
Outside, okay.
Right, and so the stone stockpiled up at the north end is going to be glancing blow impact. All right, so we believe that the stockpile will be safe with, for storage through the duration of the project. The stockpiled stone that is at the south end will be crushed and split and placed in an area which you can see on sheet one of the drawings is, is outlined. And that will be different because that's in the work area and, and it's in a, it's going to have a perimeter of straw wattle and other erosion and sediment controls. Right, the, in a hurricane, if there were waves breaking over the existing wall, the E N S controls are not going to hold. The, but the material stockpiled there will, will, I would be very certain would stay. Okay, because the waves have a big hurdle.
To get over.
To get over it. And so what will come over is mostly spray and, and the tops of waves that break and blow over.
Okay.
So it'll be dousing.
Okay.
Question, question, question for you. Is the, would the crusher be subject to the town's noise ordinance? I don't see why it wouldn't be.
It, it, it would be. And the, you know, the noise ordinance would be measured or would stipulate that the hours of operation of the vehicle. And I think it would be consistent with what's proposed from the eight to five.
Are you aware of that?
I'm sorry?
What you just said?
Yeah, could you say it again please?
The, the noise ordinance would be consistent with the hours of operation for the rock crusher. I will admit though, that's something that's not administered by the planning department or the zoning enforcement officer, that's administered by the police department.
No, it's not, but it, it's, it's clearly going to be onsite as a result of something that we approve or disapprove if that's the commission's, you know, pleasure on this. But I think because we have a hand in it, we have an obligation to, to at least inform the applicant that, that there are other rules in town that you're going to have to comply with. And you didn't know how much noise it made, I suspect a lot. And before you move the crushing machine out there, you, you should provide some information on, assuming the board acts favorably on this, on the noise levels. And if this crusher isn't within the town's standards, you're going to have to get one that is.
As far as the, I'm Kevin Miller.
I'm sorry, would you say your name please, sir?
Kevin Miller, and I'm working on the project out there at Ender's Island.
Thank you, sir.
I also retired from tilt con. And I had 30 years of experience in the concrete industry, 20 years in tilt con, and have worked on sites where we've had portable crushers come in. The, if you're familiar with the hydraulic hammer breaking up rock, that's louder than the crushing operation. The crushing operation is merely a jaw crusher that's only moving a matter of about an inch and a half or two inches. And as the rocks fall down, they get reduced in size until they come out the bottom of the jaw. So the, the noise isn't made by the crushing operation as much as it's made by the hydraulic hammer that is just merely taking the large boulders and breaking them into pieces that they can handle to get into the crusher. So it's not going to be any different than a lot of sites that you have out there or any rocky area where they, they got a ram hoe out there that's breaking up some ledge or whatever else. whatever else. So, hopefully, the contractor will be able to break down the large boulders in order to ship them into the crusher and reduce the amount of time that he's on a hydraulic breaker. As far as the concrete trucks, you know, we're very familiar with the contractor that's doing the project. In my years with TiltCon, we supplied them with a lot of concrete, it's Macknick Brothers out of, out of Old Lima. I have to agree that they are very good workers. They have a small crew, but they got a lot accomplished, and they're very well-versed with waterfront construction. They do a lot of boat ramps, they do a lot of travel lift slip areas. So, they're very well-versed with working around the water and handling themselves properly as far as any runoff or anything falling into the sound. And the other good point is that they use TiltCon all the time. And our drivers go through a very extensive safety training. So, as far as traveling the roads on Mason's Island, staying within the speed limit, driving properly, and everything else, whether it goes into the summer months or not, we're going to do it without any accidents based on our record of, of how we operate in crowded neighborhoods. And that's, and as far as the whole job goes, the whole job, we're only talking fourteen-hundred yards for the whole job. So, we're, you know, you're not talking a lot of material, and that's going to be spread over that eight-month period. So, there's not going to be a, a heavy concentration of truck traffic at any one given time. And crushing the material onsite certainly helps out a lot of reducing the truck traffic over the roads of Mason's Island. So, I'm just as concerned about what happens on Mason's Island as doing this project and stuff. So, you know, I'm sure that we're going to try to make it as good for the neighbors on the island as we can, so.
Thank you, Kevin, that's very helpful.
Kevin, I have a question for you, excuse me. So, what's the maximum size crushed boulder you can put into the rock crusher?
I don't, I'm not familiar with that crusher, I don't know what size they have, but they generally, you're going to see like a twenty-four, forty-eight, you know, you're going to, so, which means that it could take a thirty-inch rock, you know, two-foot by thirty-inch rock. So, if you go out there onsite and you look at the boulders that are there, and matter of fact, a lot of them came from construction on Mason's Island where people didn't want to haul them away. And originally, you know, we were going to try to utilize that stone and, and do a mason, masonry wall, and which is why we've been stockpiling that stone for, for years. So, you know, we've saved a lot of traffic up and down roads by having all that stone out there to begin with. And we're going to save a lot of traffic on the roads by crushing it up and using it in the wall. So, looking around the site, there's probably, I'd say thirty percent of the, you know, one-third of the stones might have to be broken into, into half or quarters in order to get them into a crusher. And the rest of them should just be able to be scooped up and, and run through the crusher. So, the crusher's going to just make a low groaning sound, you know, you're going to hear diesel engine running, and you're just going to have a low sound from the crushing operation. Like I said, the most of the, the loud noise is going to be from the breaker hammer breaking up the stone, so.
Yeah, you can always tell what project's going on around town by that noise. Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? I'm thinking that, that in any motion that the commission might consider on this, that we would, we would want to add that the plan should detail the temporary bridge, that, that the work is subject to all the ordinances of the town, even though it's implied, including the noise ordinance. And that the hours of operation are as stipulated by the applicant, and he can restate them. Since it's going to go into a motion, did you say eight-thirty to four-thirty?
Work eight to five, but.
Eight to five.
The, the workers will be there from seven in the morning.
Work will take place at eight to five?
Eight AM to five, yes.
I, I don't think driving onto the island is, is part of the, part of the work effort, so they can start work at eight. So, in any motion, I know there's some other conditions that are recommended. Clifton, do you have any other input on this?
Not too much. What was stipulated in, or the recommended stipulations were primarily contingent upon the fact that we received this updated plan set last week. That was distributed to all the town, the agencies and staff, and we've only received partial comments back. So, the first recommended stipulation to address any outstanding comments, and then the ones that, you know, go to DEEP and, you know, the Army Corps as well, those are trying to cover the fact that we distributed the information, haven't fully received comments back from those agencies. We did supply in the report the back and forth between the applicant and DEEP, and the applicant and SLR, addressing the comments that were made from the original report and incorporated into this site plan. Overall, there were no real staff comments. Everything that myself and the zoning enforcement officer spoke about was implemented into this revised plan set. A lot of that included the landscaping elements as well as the ENS controls and the phasing requirements. So, those came from my office. The only other thing I would mention, in addition to the two comments that we received from the public in written form, this application received a total of another hundred-twenty-eight comments. One hundred-twenty-three were in favor and five were opposed to this project. And so, those were not incorporated into your packets, but those are incorporated into the file. And I did want to make a note that those were all received by my office over the past few months.
So, those were straight to your office?
Correct.
And how were those collected? How were those generated? Were they just taxed of?
So, they were, they were just submitted to the office to it be included in the records, same as any other comment. Because this application didn't have a, a public hearing.
Public hearing, okay.
You know, individuals are still welcome to comment on these applications. And so, I did want to make a mention that we have received comments, and those are included in the file. And just because of the number, I wanted to call them out specifically in their pros and cons and the favor and against categories.
We appreciate the effort that the applicant did go through to make the changes before the meeting. Things like adding phasing, things like adding the sequence of operations, major issues like sedimentation and erosion control, which were not part of the original drawings, were added. So, several significant components were added to the drawings that made them a much better set of drawings and a much better project, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
You have any other questions of us?
Mr. Chairman, I would also, I want to also mention that in a potential stipulation, the applicant mentioned that hours of operation, eight AM to five PM. Applicant also mentioned that would be five days a week, so I would include that in the, in the recommended stipulation to not include weekends.
Thank you, that wasn't oversight.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Of course.
So, we focused on the seawall tonight, but the boat access facilities, what does that consist of? This is part of the application.
No, it's a reasonable question.
Up here at the northwest corner of the site, there is a, a boat basin that was created by Dr. Enders in the original construction of the site. And it's very small. It's, it's got a stone wharf protecting a wood pile and timber pier with a hinged ramp to a floating dock. The pier was pretty well destroyed in a storm in Thanksgiving and had been damaged before that. The float and the ramp have been taken off, and what is left is a relatively small basin with sandy bottom.
Right.
And what's going to be done is rebuild the wharf using many of the same stone that are there right now, taking off the fractured concrete slab and replacing it with a new concrete slab to roughly the same elevation, it'll be reinforced. And the detail on sheet three and four shows what the profile and end view of the, nope, sorry, must be on sheet two. The, in the upper-left corner shows a profile of what the, the stone wharf looked like ten years ago and what it will be rebuilt to. And in the lower-left corner shows the end view. It was a, a multi-level stone wharf for access to the boats.
What sheet are you on, I'm sorry? Three?
I'm sorry. Two?
I think it's two.
Two, two.
Along the left-hand margin of the page, those details are laid out.
So, what about, so we've talked about the stonework, thank you, but what about the dock itself and the floating dock? Is that not part of this application?
It's part of the, it's part of the DEP permit.
Okay.
Okay, it's, and it will prob, it'll be rebuilt probably with piles being driven from the land because we can't get a, a construction barge in there. The floating dock will be built offsite and the ramp will be built offsite, towed to the site, and then the ramp hooked to the, to the pier.
And will that be the same size as it previously was?
It will be the same size.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions to the applicant? I have no further questions. Is there a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application as submitted with the following stipulations. Number one, the applicant shall address any outstanding comments to the satisfaction of the town engineer and town planner. Two, the applicant shall provide the town of Stonington a copy of the certificate of permission, once approved by CT DEEP, to include the, to include in the project file. Three, final plans shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Four, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records. Number five, modifications, modifications to the site development plans, if necessitated by CT DEEP or USAC, shall be reviewed and approved by town staff and the commission as necessary. Number six, the plan should detail the temporary bridge work that will be put in place during the project. Number seven, the work shall be subject to all other existing town ordinances. Number eight, the hours of operation.
Including, including noise?
Including noise.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Number seven, to include noise. Number eight, the hours of operation for this project will be eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, five days a week.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
A second motion.
Second one by Gary, thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Northwest Marine, I believe it's the same engineer.
Thank you.
Once again, Mr. Nielsen, if you'd kindly state your name, address for the, for the record and the name of your firm.
Certainly. My name is Keith Nielsen, I'm with Daco Incorporated down here in Mystic. And we were retained by Northwest Marine to prepare the application documents for various dock and, and site improvements.
Hang on just one sec while the room clears, if you don't mind. It's difficult for us to, here, thank you. Apologize.
Thank you. I'm Keith Nielsen from Daco. We've repaired, prepared the application documents before you tonight for Northwest Marine. Northwest Marine has been a longstanding operation on the Pawtucket River, located at number seven River Road. When the site was purchased, number one River Road was also purchased. And it's a, a very tiny site, immediately on the north side of the main marina, recognizable by a, an older building, originally a garage, and an old dock system that did not have a permit. It also was subject to a DEP enforcement letter issued back in about two thousand and five or, or six, I believe. And the former owner of the property passed away without taking any of the remedial actions that the DEP required. And so, when the property changed hands through the decedent's estate, the DEP came back in and said, now you got to fix it. And so, we started off with that. The parcel that I'm referring to is up here at the north end of the site, and consists of a garage, a deck on the back of the garage, and a hinged ramp down to a floating dock just north of the marina site, which is this large area here. So, this project, the marina has some, some needs of updating some of its facilities and reconstructing some of the facilities. The bulkhead and system along the northeast edge of the site is in, in need of repair or replacement, I should say. And so, it is planned that a new steel sheet pile bulkhead would be installed. The travel lifts are inefficient and really do not suit the boating needs, the boating demand of the site, and so they're going to be rebuilt. There's no work planned on the dock facilities or the bulkhead for the south half of the site. There was a pretty innovative method of creating that south part of the site, and it's going to take us a while to figure out how exactly to fix it. And so, we did not include it in the initial permitting. Looking at, and like I said, there's not going to be any upland changes to the site in this area, but in the far northeast corner, there is. Oh, this sheet two in my exhibit set is simply a copy of the A2 boundary survey, which was furnished to the town planner and zoning official. So, I don't, I won't be spending much time on that. The, sheet two, you'll notice, looks almost identical to sheet one. The changes to the site are going to be subtle and almost not recognizable to the public. The plan is to oversheet the entire northeast corner of the site with steel sheet pile bulkhead and a twenty, thirty-five-foot return at the north end going to the west. It will also involve rebuilding the, see, this is going to be trouble here. Be rebuilding the stone wall at the north, along the north property line and shown in this area here. We've spent quite a bit of time with Mr. Greenlaw, the town engineer, to review the permitting requirements for a building permit for that, for that wall, and since part of it will touch the town right away. And then, continuing on to the north parcel, replacement of a dilapidated wood bulkhead, restoration of the docking facility with some very minor modifications, and the same with the access deck from the back of the garage. The, and we have details to, to go with each one of those pieces of work. Right inside. Right inside the external steel sheet pile bulkhead, we will be building a boat launch ramp, and the, that will involve two interior steel sheet pile walls, which are really better shown on sheet three. As are the details of the small docking facility, which will be the staging area for boats launched from this launch well. This launch ramp complies with DEP and DOT launch ramp requirements at thirteen and a half percent grade. It will be surfaced with either concrete planks or a concrete slab to make traction attainable for even some heavy boats that will be utilizing it. There will be a setback from the outside bulkhead to the inside bulkhead of about eight to 10 feet that will provide a walkway for the full length of the launch ramp and will provide access to the floating dock via stair, floating dock mounted stairs, like they have currently at the site. We've got a cross-section of the launch ramp so that you can see what those details will look like. We also have a cross-section up here toward the end, which shows the launch ramp and how it will be at a lower level than the rest of the site, lined with sheet piling on both sides, and then the floating dock with pile anchorage and security on the outside of the new sheeting. These two sheet pile walls will be interconnected so that they will anchor each other, and they will be backfilled with crushed stone and gravel, so it's a good balance of material. And the material that will be used for the backfill will come out of the excavation process. The floating dock system is detailed in the upper right-hand corner to match the dimensions and location of the floating dock here. There is one area of tidal wetlands vegetation on the site that the DEP asks that we preserve, and so the stone wall was rerouted about five feet in this area to clear that tidal wetlands. Otherwise, it follows the same line as the existing stonework on the site. The wood, new wood bulkhead follows the existing line of wood bulkhead on the site as well. And this new grading will allow for vehicle drop-off and pickup traffic. There won't be permanent parking on this, on this small site. They've got all the parking they need on the main site, and they, they want this to be a staging area, again, for boats utilizing the launch ramp facility. In our several meetings with Mr. Greenlaw, we added various details and clarified various details so that we could obtain his approval for this project being consistent with town standards. And in this case, we do have the DEP certificate of permission, and I believe that Mr. Eiler has been, already received a copy of it. And I would be happy to answer any questions you might have at this point.
The real Ben Filbrick?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of questions. What's your depth of water at high tide at the end, at that launch ramp?
We're going down to negative nine.
At high tide, it's nine feet?
It's negative nine NAVD. Negative nine NAVD, the, the survey datum.
And why is the ramp so long? Most boat launch ramps are kind of steep to get the boat in quicker.
Well, the, we've designed about 20 ramps. Thirteen and a half percent slope is what you want. If it's much shallower than that, the launch vehicle, the car, has to back into the water to get deep enough water to float the boat off the trailer, and so this thirteen and a half percent is not arbitrary. It, it allows the car to launch the boat with the back wheels just touching the water in most cases.
And then you have a 315-foot floating dock with only one set of stairs at one end?
Yeah, the-
In the middle.
We do have the hinged ramps and this platform. There is, if you look at sheet three, you'll see a set of ground-level stairs, and those stairs are mounted to the float, and they're portable. They can be set here. The reason there's no dimension on them is because these are existing stairs that are on the dock now, and they can be here, or here, or they can be wherever, you know, they're needed, okay? Otherwise-
So you're gonna move, you're moving them around? They're portable?
They can, they're portable.
Well, my concern is if you're the poor bloke at the north end of the floating dock and you gotta walk 315 feet down to the set of stairs because you forgot your car keys or, or your boat keys or something.
That'll be a mistake you'll make once.
But, well, let's rephrase it. Say if there's a fire on a gas engine boat along that-
This is, right, this is-
There's only one set of exit stairs to get the heck off that dock if it was engulfed in flames.
This float is 300 feet long-
Right.
And the, and, and it's, and it's appropriate distance, and if they want to have this portable set of stairs moved somewhere else, they can do that to provide a second point of access.
Thank you.
But this is, this ramp system is designed so that the elevation of the deck and the slope of the ramp will be something that 99% of all people who want to use this dock can use. I don't know if you're aware of the ADA standards for hinged ramps, but there are exemptions in tidal waters for how steep that ramp can be, and based on the amount of time, that would be steeper than a 12 on one slope, this fits the exemptions.
Thank you.
So Ben, is your thought process that there should be an additional set of stairs, portable or not available?
I would think at that north end, you'd want egress, yeah.
Doesn't make sense, given the length of it.
Is there, is there reason why that cannot happen?
No, it, it exists now.
Oh.
These stairs are there now.
There's always two stairs. There's one temporary that can be moved around as well, and the other one is permanent.
Right. Right, the last time I was on the dock, I used those stairs.
Where are the stairs, where are the stairs at the north end?
If you, if you, if you look at sheet three of the drawings, okay, go to the northeast corner of the anti-tracking strip, and just look to the right and down about a half an inch, and you'll see the stairs there.
Okay, so it's still a hundred feet toward the east of the north end, right?
They can be moved anywhere. They're portable.
Okay. I guess it doesn't actually, I'm fine. I think you want another set of access, that's more than-
Yep, the owners-
You can add a stipulation that there'll always be two sets of stairs.
Well, there are now.
There are now, but one of them's portable and can be moved.
Right.
So they may not always be there unless you so stipulate.
Right.
If I could just get into this for a second, the way we've designed the floating dock meets current standards of Marina operations. If you want to stipulate that second portable set, please don't stipulate two. Just stipulate a second portable set, okay? Because the hinged ramp is right there, all right? We've got the, the portable steps here. They could be here, they could be in other, other places.
That's reasonable.
But don't stipulate two, please.
We won't.
Okay. Thank you.
We will obey your command.
Don't mean to be like that.
Any further questions? Anyone else have any questions? Staff?
No questions or comments. Again, same with the last application. The stipulations were put in there reflecting updated plan sets that hadn't fully been reviewed by town staff. As of today, the town engineer did sign off on all of the, all of the edits that were made, and is, does recommend approval of this application as it's, as it's shown. Attached the copied questions from the floodplain manager with the correspondence back and forth. All the other memorandums were attached. The only comment that both myself and the zoning enforcement officer made was that the structure that's currently at One River Road is considered, is illegal nonconformity, and the illegal, illegal use that was at that site has since been abandoned prior to this project being approved, or being before you. So there's no, there's no change within the use or the structure that is currently at that site. This is all just C-word, so just wanted to, you know, capture that in case there was a concern with that legal nonconformity.
I'd like to recommend that this application have a phasing plan like the, the previous application, so that there is an order to the way that it's built and approached, and that it be developed by the engineer and put on the plans. Any objections to that? Mr. Nielsen?
The, no, I can, I can tell you that the most expensive part of this project is the bulkhead and, and what is going to happen, what I believe is going to happen, is we're going to install the new bulkhead around the outside of the northeasterly corner, and we're going to have a return, as I mentioned before, 35 feet or so, and at the, and then this new floating dock is going to be installed, and that will be done over the winter, probably not this year, but maybe next year, so that that part is in operation. They're going to have to save some money for the ramp. The ramp is an expensive item because it'll have sheet pile walls on both sides, and the, and the grading and so on. So I can't tell you exactly how this phasing will work, but I do know that it's important to them to get the north parcel whipped into shape, and we have told the DEP that we would do that, and we intend to do it. And so the way I believe this will happen is, one, at the north end, two, exterior bulkhead and exterior floating dock. The travel lift, I believe, will probably be third, and then the launch ramp, I'm sorry, they'll do the stonework in there in phase one or two, and then the launch ramp will be the last.
Makes sense. We'll, we'll stipulate it, and any changes will be subject to you and the town engineer discussing them and agreeing upon it, so you don't have to come back to us.
Certainly, we'd be agreeable. Absolutely, it's great working with Mr. Greenlaw.
All right, well, thank you. Any further questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's commission's pleasure on Northwest Marine application.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the application as submitted with the following stipulations. One, the applicant shall address the outstanding comments to the satisfaction of the town engineer and town planner. Number two, final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number three, prior to the issuance of the zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land and evidence records. Number four, modifications to the site development plans, if necessitated by CTDEEP or USAC, shall be reviewed and approved by the town staff and the commission as necessary. Number five, would address that the, the applicant will have a phasing plan, as he just described, added to the application, and any changes to that would be reviewed with the town engineer and town planner.
Perfect. So a motion made? Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up is BG Ventures LLC bond release reduction application. Twenty-six Old Stonington Road, Stonington?
Uh, yeah, excuse me, Eric Goodman for BG Ventures.
Evening, sir.
How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Good.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Just want our money back.
We're done.
It's been about a year, year and a half, so.
Okay. Town engineer recommending approval?
Yep, town engineer recommended approval. I took, I took a walk with him and the zoning enforcement officer on the site just to confirm that everything was completed as necessary. I recommend a full release of the bond.
So the staff is in-
Yep.
Okay, the staff is in agreement. What's the commission's pleasure on the bond reduction for BG Ventures?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the application as submitted.
Motion is made to approve the application as submitted. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Second, and thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, I wanted to say the landscaping looks great down there. Well done.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any more discussion on the, on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a statement that has to be read into the, do you have that, Lynn? Okay. This is the continuation of the public hearing of Waterford Two LLC and Redco Stonington Three LLC.
Pursuant to general statutes of the state of Connecticut, revision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that this public hearing, which has been published twice in newspapers, having substantial circulation within the town of Stonington. The first publication date was Friday, December 8th, 2023, being not more than 15 and less than 10 days prior to the hearing. The second publication date was Friday, December 15th, 2023, being not less than two days before the hearing. The newspapers in which these notices were published were The Sun and The New London Day. Today's public hearing is a continuation from the December 19th, 2023 public hearing.
Thank you, Lynn.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is John Casey. I'm a partner with the law firm of Robinson &amp; Cole, representing the applicants tonight. As you just heard in the notice, this is a continuation of the meeting from December 19th. Brief setup, this is a transformative project at the old movie theater on Route 2 to provide multifamily housing and a recreational facility there. We're in the master plan approval process, which is the first step to create the neighborhood design district zone on the property. And if it's approved, we will be back with specific site plan application. With me this evening, again, is Michael Leach, from the property owner and developer, RCP Waterford Two and Redco Stonington, Jeremy Browning, Jeffrey Fitzgerald, our engineer, and Roz Chifalelli, our architect. Tonight, we've, we had a pretty substantial presentation in December, so it's not our intention to re-present that material. What we're here for tonight is to present additional information that was requested of us regarding the potential to create affordable housing units as part of the development, as well as to provide some more information about stormwater management and implementing low-impact development strategies on the site. We obviously happy to take any questions about the project in general, but we just don't want to repeat ourselves unnecessarily. So with that, I will turn it over to Jeremy Browning, who will discuss the, the research he's done into the possible creation of affordable housing on the site.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Jeremy Browning with Trio Properties, one of the development partners in this project. At our first, you know, presentation in front of the commission, there were some questions and inquiries about affordable housing. We aren't- We aren't applying under, you know, with a request for affordable housing, but we do intend, and I think I might have spoken to it last meeting, to apply for a program that the DOH has currently through Connecticut Housing Finance Authority, or CHIFA, called the Build for CT Workforce Housing Program. So, I wanted to share a little bit more about that program and how it works and how we would go about applying for it. The program essentially is a financing instrument that once a project is approved, the developer can apply for that program and what they would do is in exchange for low-interest rate loan, essentially $125,000 towards a development project per affordable unit, they will restrict 20% of the housing stock. So, in our case, we have 124 units, so this would be 25 units, to an 80% area median income rent level. So, the CHIFA, their department determines those rent levels and what they're really looking for to see a, an appropriate spread between the market rent level that the developer and the appraisals say we can reasonably hope to charge and the affordable rents that CHIFA sets. And they do that based, as I said, on the area median income. So, we've provided our information to CHIFA for some preliminary underwriting for this program and they've come back with a favorable response. They like the project. They are looking to institute this project in different areas of the state and certainly southeastern Connecticut and Stonington in general is of interest to them. So, they're favorable on the project and the target rent spread that they would get is about $300 on average. So, what I'm saying there, and I want to be clear, is like what our average market rent might be for a studio might be $150 less if an 80% AMI person came in and qualified for that unit. On a two-bedroom unit, it might be $400 less. They tell us what those rents are and then we rent according, you know, to those regulations, if you will, those stipulations. So, while we can't commit to providing affordable housing because we haven't been formally approved by that program, we've received an informal favorable determination and we can confirm that, you know, that program works for us and provided we get the approvals, we will be applying for that program.
So, of the 25 units?
Yep.
Would all of them be at 80%?
That is correct.
And would you determine how many would be one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and studio apartments of that 25?
No. It's spread evenly. It's dispersed evenly throughout the unit mix, if you will.
Okay.
That's what we call the unit mix. And so, we provided the CHIFA team with our unit mix and our market rents by unit.
Okay.
And then they come back and say, you know, we're going to give 20% and these are what the rents would be for a studio, these are what they'd have to be for a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom. They actually, just on your question about 80%, the program actually will look at 80%, 60%, 80%, 100%, and 120%. But they're always looking for that spread of affordability and they're really targeting workforce housing.
Okay.
So, they came back to us and said 80%, 80%, 80%. I have seen other projects in other municipalities where the rent levels are higher, where they've actually gone back, CHIFA's come back and said, "We want, you know, these at the 100% and these at the 80%." But for this project and the underwriting we've received, all of the 25 units would be at an 80% AMI and that works out to about a $300 on average monthly savings relative to our market rents.
Okay.
So, folks that qualify for that program would see that lower rate.
And for how many years?
The minimum requirement of the program is six years. The way the program works, as long as the loan is in place, the requirement, the stipulation, the restriction stays in place. And so, what they're trying to do is they're giving you essentially a 2% loan. You know, for our project, it's $4 million. And so, you, most developers are not going to refinance that and put a higher interest rate on it, so that's how they get more traction. But they're, the way their program is set up, it's a six-year minimum. So, if we were to, for some reason, refinance in two years, we would have to keep those restrictions in place for six years.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. You're welcome.
Just to be sure, I'm sure it is, but those 25 units, they would be deemed by the state, the other part of the state that makes Stonington subject to this 80, 830 rule that we're not going to form to affordable housing?
Mm-hmm.
These would be affordable housing, then?
Those units, because they're 80%, do count towards that tally that you're asking about, yes. If we were in the 100% category, my understanding is that they wouldn't, but that's not relative to us because the 100% doesn't work for the program. It's close to where our market rents are.
Very good.
Thank you.
What happens on year seven? Does the state change the number or do you change the number?
As long as the loan is in place?
Yep.
The unit, the restrictions stay in place.
Okay.
So, the only way that, let's say, year eight?
Right.
We sold the property and the person that bought it didn't want to assume that loan, which is assumable, by the way. If this person didn't want to assume it and they refinance and paid it off, the restrictions would go away. They do follow the financing. I don't know what CHIFA is going to do about that in the future. Yeah. I couldn't speak to that, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Good. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Fitzgerald, who's going to address the stormwater information.
Evening, Jeff.
Could I ask one or two more questions about the affordability aspect first, if we're ready to switch gears? You know, my only concern, this sounds great and I'm encouraged that you guys went through the trouble to do all of this homework and thanks for so much more information. You know, I'm still a little bit hesitant to rely completely upon this to make sure that there ends up being some affordable housing in the project. Would you, would the developer be open to a stipulation that if this financing fails, for some reason, that a certain portion, maybe a smaller portion, maybe 10%, would be deed restricted for six years in return for the NDD zone?
I can't speak to that right this minute.
Yeah. And so, again, John Casey, for the record, I think there's two responses to that, but I'll do the legal one. So, there's nothing in your regulations that can require you to place a stipulation on this that there be affordable housing. So, I, if you were to place that stipulation, I think it would be illegal. So, I'll start there. We appreciate, and actually you can tell by the work that Jeremy did, confering with Michael and spent a lot of time with the state to find this information, that they're committed to having some type of affordable housing, workforce housing. But we cannot commit, you know, we can't, if you were to condition this to say you need 10%, 25%, and this fell through, affordable housing generally nowadays is, it's all based on the financing. So, I don't think we could do affordable housing with a conventional loan. The money just wouldn't work. So, it would mean that the project would just not go anywhere.
Let me just cut to the quick here.
Yep.
We understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Would you agree to a stipulation, and this is kind of halfway to what you're saying, that you would apply for this program?
That is absolutely what we're agreeing to.
So, why don't we add that stipulation, that they apply?
We can agree to apply because we will apply regardless of whether you stipulate or not, but also because we understand the economics of that and we know that we can, the project's viable and we really do want to provide that housing in that way. An undefined stipulation, I can't answer what that would do to the viability of the project. I just don't know.
I agree that we can't stipulate, that you provide affordable housing.
Thank you.
So, what we can do is stipulate that they apply.
Well, not only apply, but to use it if granted. Well, I mean, you.
True. And to that point, then, can you name that program again? I just want to make it right. Build for CT. Build for CT. The number four.
It's in our supplemental materials.
I think the fact that you did so much work in such a short period of time shows a lot of good faith.
I appreciate saying that.
And that's much appreciated.
Just so you know, like with another client of ours, we were kind of the case study for this program, so I did have some advanced knowledge and I knew that it was a great fit for this project. So, we're not just saying that because you asked. We really do believe in the program. It works well for the development, so.
This is, it's through a myriad of programs like this that affordable housing is going to make gains in communities like this.
I agree.
And that's a significant percentage of the units.
Yep.
So, and this could be a potential big win. And you raised the question to begin with, so.
Yeah. And I appreciate it and I don't mean to be rude when I see how far I can reach.
Yep. Appreciate it.
And I think it would have been applied for?
Yes.
Even if it hadn't come up? I mean, typically financing doesn't come up in an application like this or, you know, unless you're doing an 830G and you're specifically going for affordable housing.
We understand the difference.
Okay. Any other on the affordable element?
No.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Evening, Jeff.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Jeff Fitzgerald, engineer with Bowler. So, last time you guys asked us two things, if we could incorporate some LID, stormwater management techniques into the existing system that we're using and also if we could model that existing system using latest HydroCAD software and the latest rainfall data, given current data from NOAA. And we did all that and we modeled the system. If we can, there it is. Okay. So, as you recall, there's two large underground detention systems, one located south of the McDonald's and one in this area on the north side parking lot of the Hoits. And so, we took the existing geotech data from the original application, the soils that were there, and ran all our new collection systems, our new impervious areas with the new design and modeled it through the systems as presented there. And the systems demonstrated that they'll have plenty of capacity. We actually see a reduction in the flows leaving the system based on the fact that we have a reduction of flows going in, increase in pervious green surfaces. And on top of that, we have incorporated a series of LID retrofits around the existing parking lots and using some rain gardens, which is this on the left, interspersed throughout some of the smaller areas, which are intended to have stormwater, the rain gardens have stormwater piped into them from surfaces and roofs and have the ability to have some infiltration and some biofiltration, bioremediation, and then a high-level overflow, which goes back into the system and through the detention that we talked about underground before it's discharged to the north. And those are taking place in these dark green areas, the rain gardens over here. And then we incorporate a series of bioswales and bioremediation basins along the edges of these parking lots where stormwater can sheet flow across a stone apron into a planted, so a system like this, planted bioswale, biobasin that would drain towards, following the topography, the topography that is there allows us to get these in and we have these shown over here before there, then have overflow piping that connects back into the system for very large storms. You see the same thing in this area over here on the bottom right of the page and then at the edge of these large parking lots on the west side of the site along Liberty Street where we, again, have incorporated that. And these images show kind of what this can look like, is an example of one where you have the sheet flow off across a stone apron into essentially a bioswale that's planted. This is another rendering of one that's a bit more elaborately planted. We want this to be decorative because it's in an area around residential, not just a commercial parking lot. So, we can really do some nice things here in Stonington with fountain grasses and other appropriate plantings in these swales that provide not just good looks, but can actually provide some bioremediation. So, that's in short answer what we propose at this stage, our strategy to be able to have, use the existing infrastructure that's been maintained. We submitted the maintenance records for that system. It's in great shape. It's, I think it's demonstrated, it's good design in the years that it's been in place and we propose to use those detention systems and we'll have new piping connecting this all, which will all be designed and submitted to the engineer as part of our, the next phase in our approvals. So, be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
I think the addition of Level One treatment here is going to prove to be very valuable in subsequent reviews.
Yeah.
It's exactly what we were looking for.
Thank you.
Exactly. Actually, more detail than I thought we would get, so appreciate the extra work and it's going to prove to be very valuable in the next phase of the project. We have a project right now in an aquifer protection zone in another section of town that's trying to work all of these details out without a master plan and it's proving to be very difficult. Attainable, but difficult. This one is going to be much easier because you have Level One and Level Two treatment already incorporated into the plan, so. Thank you kindly, Jeff.
Thanks.
I do feel reassured, too, that you reran the numbers. Technology has advanced tremendously in terms of stormwater modeling since that shopping center was built and the systems now with the incorporation of IDF tables and things that we didn't have when that was originally done, make the designs much more bulletproof, so.
Definitely.
I feel much more comfortable with the extra work that's been done. So, thank you very much. Questions by the commission? Staff?
No major other questions. Again, with the revisions to this plan, it was, again, submitted to all the agencies and staff again. All of the comments came back, no additional comments. They're in support of the revised plan set and, you know, just from my perspective, everything met what we discussed at the previous meeting and it's been, you know, completely provided by the applicant as well, so no comments from me.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for the applicant's engineers or the attorneys? Hearing none. We will move to public comment. We have a sign-up sheet here. If anybody didn't sign up, they're welcome to speak, but we'll deal with those who have signed up first. If, for the record, when you come to the mic, you would just state your full name and your address. We know you well, Carleen, but.
That's all right. My name is Carleen Donnarumo. I live at 2200 Good Avenue in Parketuck.
Evening.
Good evening. I'm sure you've heard of the expression, "Be careful what you wish for." And I'm going to change that to, "Be careful what you vote for." My greatest fear is that if you approve this application and grant the NDD zone, you will open a floodgate to more HI properties, property owners applying for multifamily apartments, not what the intent of the HIZ zone is, as expressed in the 48 other permitted uses listed for this zone.
Thank you.
I urge you not only to not approve this application, as I strongly feel it is a misuse of the NDD Neighborhood Development District. The key to this regulation is that it applies to village cores and that is what has been lost in this whole discussion. It is not in a village core. I think the regulation perhaps was written poorly. And so, there is one place where it was used correctly and that was in Parketuck. And so, there is one place where it was used correctly, and that was in Parketuck on Mechanic Street, and the condos on Mechanic Street that also front on Prospect Street. If you know, that was a manufacturing zone, and now it is condos. So, that's where it was used properly. I would also suggest, when you review the regulations with the rewrite that's happening, and they come up in the future, that the HI zone be deleted from this regulation. As it is, these properties, HI-60, are in no way, shape, or form in a village core area. The word "village," if you reread the POCD that's listed in the plan's report, it appears frequently. And again, I'm telling you that I feel that that has, that whole aspect has been completely lost in this discussion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carlene. Anyone else in the audience that didn't sign up wish to speak? Yes, Deb?
I think he's laughing at me. Hi, I'm Deborah Downey, Five Back Acres Way. I'm just making a couple of comments, and just for the record, I am a licensed environmental professional, a hydrogeologist with 35 years' experience. I appreciate adding the primary treatment to an aquifer protection zone. We're struggling with this in town. We haven't done enough with our aquifer protection zones. We really need to make sure that the stormwater meets water quality standards.
Correct.
Because it's going right into the groundwater. So, I do appreciate, you know, looking at this versus other applications that don't have bioswales or biotreatment, and just are relying on secondary infiltration. I also appreciate that there is a consideration for adding the affordable housing because it is something that the town needs, but we need affordable housing with quality of life and safety for pedestrians that live there, you know, sidewalks and things like this, that this plan does have, that other plans don't necessarily have. I'm not going to comment on the zoning aspect, but I do think that Carlene raises an interesting point there. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just add that I do think that having this blueprint in the master plan sets the tone for what we expect in future site plans. And anyone applying in an aquifer protection zone from this point forward can expect to do exactly the same thing. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. Evening, Ben.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. It's Ben Tamski, Five Edgemont Street in Mystic. And further record, I'm speaking as a private citizen. That was before the commission a couple of years ago when the Latizori project at Perkins Farm was approved. And I think that a great opportunity was lost there to not even ask for an affordable housing segment to it. And I applaud Mr. Meek for bringing it up in this application. And I think that you guys, you're in the best position right now with the request for zone change to make it happen. And I think that the applicant, while they've shown some good faith, I think that there's no guarantee that we're going to get affordable housing in this, and I think you should insist, not just that they apply for the financing, but that they actually provide affordable housing as part of your approval. And, you know, if it's challenged, their attorney says it's not, you can't ask for it, you can't require it, I'd say let's, you know, maybe it's time that we spend the money to let a judge decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. Just state your name, if you would, please, and address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tom Gerallo. I live at 23 Russell Avenue. Thanks for your time tonight and to everybody here. Briefly, just wanted to say thank you for your comments on the aquifer protection aspects of this project, watching as a citizen who lives in this part of town, who's concerned about these issues, was very pleasant to see the portrayal tonight that they put up there. Really appreciate that, appreciate the board's reaction to that, and ask you to keep that in mind as future proposals come before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Does the applicant require rebuttal time?
For the record, John Casey for the applicant. Just briefly, just on some of these comments, we're happy to put in the work and the information on the aquifer protection. I guess the only sort of disconnect, maybe when we started this, was we didn't think that was necessary at the master plan stage. We obviously knew we would need a groundwater protection permit when we went for the site plan, and all those details that Jeffrey spoke about, those would all have been on the next level of the site plan. So, I know, so now we're a little bit further down the road, we're happy to accommodate the commission's request on that. So, I don't want anyone to think we are going to try to get this approved without showing how we would comply with the groundwater protection requirements. And I guess on two things, maybe you don't need to hear it, but I think any suggestion to, you know, put a poison pill into an approval that would require an applicant to either maybe just walk away from the project, I've been involved in projects like that, or sort of daring them to go to court, is not an appropriate action by a commission like this. If you know, as the chairman said, that you don't have the authority to require affordable housing as part of this approval, which I think your planner agrees with me on that, then it would be wasteful for this commission, for all the time we put into it to require that. I understand the feeling behind wanting to create more affordable housing, but there's a right way to encourage it, and there's a wrong way. I think we're going about it the right way, and the suggestion by the chairman, I think, is the right way, and we're more than willing to do that. But then there's a wrong way. So, we would ask that what you suggest is the direction that we go in. And lastly, as to whether this property is appropriate for an NDD, it's explicitly in your regulations that this zone is eligible for an NDD. It's written very broadly, but I would say, you know, when it talks about redeveloping underused properties, what's the, you know, what's the threshold there? Do we have to wait for the weeds to start growing up through the property, for a window to break, you know, for a roof to fall in, and then, oh, now we'll redevelop it? Or is it appropriate to say, hey, we have this very useful tool to create housing in our town, which everyone on this commission seems to recognize, you need more diverse housing that's in your plan of conservation and development, and it fits in this zone, it fits at this location? So, while, yes, maybe what the original drafters of this regulation thought was we want to focus on Parketuck and Mystic, but that's not how they wrote it. So, the interpretation of that zone and that regulation has to be based on the language of the regulation. So, we're squarely within the four corners of what is permitted and how this zone should be used. And I guess the fact, I had it, I think this has been around for over 20 years, I believe. I saw it in the list of amendments, but I think it's at least 20 years. So, and we're number two. So, it's a good idea, but it's clearly been underused. This is a great opportunity to use it, and if it creates more housing here, and if the neighbors want to add on, we think that's a good thing for this stretch of town, on a major road, good access to the highway, good amenities for residents. So, we would say it's, you know, it's a prime location for an NDD zone. And for that reason, we would ask that you approve it.
Again, thank you for the work, the good work that was done, and I do think that the master planning was required at this stage, and it sets the stage, I think, for a better development, for the aquifer protection zone. Anyone else require rebuttal time that spoke previously?
I'll just say from staff perspective, you know, the applicant and I, and I believe the commission are all in agreement about what's legally viable versus what isn't, and I wouldn't want to put the town and the taxpayers through into legal liability for doing something that's explicitly stated that you cannot do. So, I'm just going to reiterate that point. And then the other part regarding the, yeah, regarding the zoning element, again, the applicant is correct, the HI-60 zone is eligible for the NDD. It's pretty, you know, it's no more cut and dry than that. The POCD is largely a advisory guidance document. It has to be reflected in terms of approving the zone change application, so you have to look at it again holistically. But, I mean, it's very explicitly written, so I don't think there's a concern there on our end.
Do any of the alternates have any questions of Clifton or of any, want to make any other statements before we close the public hearing? Because we'll go into regular session, and then only regular board members can speak.
I just want to echo everybody's sentiments that I appreciate all the hard work when it comes to mitigating stormwater, as well as an effort to improve affordable housing.
Thank you, Mary.
Yes, actually, seven-point, well, the old numbers. I don't have my new zoning regulation numbers correct, but "Statement of Purpose for the NDD is intended to encourage the reclamation of underutilized commercial partials and permit new construction, renovation, or adaptive reuse at these sites, promote diversified housing opportunities, et cetera." And then later on, it does talk about harmony and capability, compatibility with surrounding residential neighborhoods, land uses, and the village cores. So, it's a pretty broad.
Agreed.
Sweeping paintbrush they're using.
Clip line, Ben.
But, and maintain and enhance compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods. Well, this has already been deserted farmland that was made into a movie theater lot. So, is that the neighborhood it is now? One could say yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a quick question as well. So, when they recommended, do you want, Jeff?
Yeah, Jeff, or.
Jeremy?
Jeremy, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when they recommended, when you put your numbers in of recommended rental price, and they came back with the 80%, are they saying your numbers are, I guess, if you went higher, would they recommend 60%? Or if you went lower, would they go 100?
It's actually the other way. If our rents were higher, they might go up to 100 because they're looking for a spread. They want to see a discount so that people who can't afford the market rate are getting in at a lower rate.
Okay.
They're bankers, though, they're lenders by trade, so they look at our rents relative to market studies of apartments in the area, et cetera, and they deem our market rents reasonable before they kind of come back and say, you know, we believe in your rents, and so we're underwriting at 80% because that gets us the discount that we want. So, if our rents were artificially high, they would say, these aren't achievable rents, and they kind of knock us back down. So, they're looking at it both ways, like, here's the market, we want to be under the market by a certain amount, and so that's 80%. And they literally, they have a spreadsheet for the entire state, and it just, you drop down, you pick Stonington, and it spits out what their rents are.
Gotcha.
At 80%. So, that's determined, and it's just a matter of how far away from our rents they are.
Okay. And I guess since you went through that process, would you, because obviously if the state prints out what they think affordable rate, you know, is, you know, maybe that was done 10 years ago, and it has no correlation with now or something, but do you, I guess from their recommendation of 80%, we think that they see that affordable housing is a problem in Stonington, or is more a problem, less a problem, or?
I'm not sure. I want to make sure I'm following your question.
I guess if you said the rents are X, and they came back and said those are way too high, is that based off of their number of, you know, annual income in Stonington?
No, if I said the market rents were X, right, I'll use Harbor Heights as an example, right? So, let's just say their studio is $1,800 a month. I don't know if they have studios, but it's $1,800 a month. And we submitted to build-for-CT program, and we said our studios are $2,400 a month because we wanted to, we know that they want a gap, so we wanted to get the highest level we could out of them. They would say, that's ridiculous. Your number-one competitor down the street is at 1,800, your studio should be 1,800. And therefore, we want you to do the build-for-CT affordable units at 1,600, or something to that effect.
Sure, okay.
So, that was my only point, is like, the market rents are established by us, but they're backstopped by them before they come back to us with their underwriting and say, you know, we agree with your rents, we agree with your assumptions, and here's where our rents would be, and this is what we'll offer you for financing. This is, you know, talking about that preliminary conversation we've had, this is kind of where we think you'll be. And so then we put that into our model and say that allows us to move forward with the project with these units in tow.
Sure.
And if it wasn't, if it didn't get us there, we wouldn't do it, you know, but it does. You know, we're committing to you guys that what they've shown us thus far does work, so we will be applying for it upon, you know, getting our site plan approvals.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bennett. If there's no one else to comment on the public hearing, I think we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this application?
Motion is made to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Anyone opposed? Any intentions? Motion passes.
I would just like to say that there was a comment regarding Perkins Farm and the second phase of development, which is currently ongoing. During that session, the committee did ask about the possibility of affordable housing, and we were told there was no possibility based on the numbers. And again, as we've discussed here, we can't really say you have to do this in order to get approval. So, we are kind of, we can ask these questions, which we always should, but our hands are tied.
That was the initial answer here, too, and yet this applicant sought a creative way to seek out a different program. And I think that it's through cooperative efforts like this between the commission and applicants, and the inclusion within the approval, that it is our expectation that you will follow through on this. I think through good faith, we will achieve. Now, maybe that's a naive assumption. I certainly hope not, and I don't think, I don't think the applicant expressed anything but his intentions in good faith there. So, no.
No, I totally, guys, just commenting.
No, no, I, but my point is, my point is, you're absolutely right. We asked, and we were told no, and we were kind of told the same thing here, but we went a little further, and there was a joint effort between the applicant and the commission. They said they would explore this, we reached it, we put it in as a condition, hopefully, you know, that will mature into the satisfaction of, you know, those 24 units becoming affordable housing. So, you make a very good comment.
I think this process has been illuminating in that we don't necessarily have the authority to demand affordable housing, that we wish we did. And I'd like to put it before the commission that we could consider redefining the NDD to include affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
And then, we wouldn't have to, a developer would come in, they would know that that's what the NDD is. It would require much less pushing, and people would come with a plan.
Very good point, Andy.
Thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, too, I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to say thank you very much to the developer and for the extra work that they put in to do this, not only for the stormwater, but also for the affordable housing. And I think they have shown a very good faith effort on both fronts to do this. I, yes, we do not have the authority to force affordable housing, and that's something else we can discuss later on, you know, if that should be put on the NDD or something of that nature. But I think specifically to this application, I do feel that they have, A, made a good faith effort, and I believe what they have put forth to support their applications is valid. And I also want to just make the note, I'm all in favor of affordable housing, but overall, we need housing, period, you know. You know, market rate and others as well. And I think this program, by incorporating something creative with the affordable housing element, along with a larger, you know, regular housing, if you want to call it, I don't know what you want to call it, I think this area needs that kind of development. And this particular submission can be a great, an example for other developers to follow.
I, as a part of the mandatory training that we have to go through as commissioners, or that it's stipulated that we go through as commissioners, I went to an affordable housing seminar that was put on by a law firm. It was very illuminating. And one of the things that they spoke to was the commission's authority, exactly as it's been stipulated here. And we do not have the authority to require someone to provide affordable housing. We simply don't. So I think, again, through cooperative efforts, originally brought up by Andy when you asked the question at that meeting, thank you for having a good insight to do that.
You guys give me too much credit. I assume one of you would have done it if I hadn't.
Well, it came from you, and through effective discussion and actions in good faith, the applicant has proposed something that I think may result in a very positive outcome, and I'm hopeful that it does. With that in mind, what's the commission's pleasure on the application of Waterford II and Redco Stonington III?
So, Clifton, if I understand it, there are three decisions we need to make this evening. Is that correct?
Correct. You can do it in a singular motion.
Okay, in a single motion, okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, this plan is submitted, and that we approve that it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development, also that it is consistent with our zoning regulations, and that it is consistent with our zoning map amendment applicat, zoning map amendment application. Sorry, I say that five times. And then the final stipulation is that the, this...
The applicant would agree to apply to the build-for-CT grant, as was discussed in this hearing.
Thank you, Ryan. Motion has been made by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Chair votes aye. Motion passes unanimously. I think the appropriate motion is in order since all the business is done for this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn this hearing and meeting.
Motion has been made to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.